And if you open it or something, it popped right back on.
And I tell you, we felt like that was the right, that we were being called together.
Now, we got a full boat here tonight. This is good. I think, um...
I would say it was jam up.
I don't see the wrestlers. I said that guy in the back, back there, I think his son is one of the ones that's, he's so dominant.
He looked like this. We warmed up, dumped it for thirty minutes and...
At least you didn't switch denominations.
I know it. You know, I just, I couldn't believe it. I tell Riley, that's how he...
We're gonna start playing soccer. You don't have to worry about it.
Well, you heard him puke every morning.
That is the cool thing about soccer. I hardly get rain.
That's how he lost that weight.
All right, y'all ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Strike the band up here again. Probably not. All right, let's move. Ready, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Jay, Councilman Jay Arrowood, to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for today. I thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on this council. I thank you that you have blessed our city from day one. And we, um... We're thankful, Lord, that we are who we are, that, that, that we, we, this, this council tries to do your will. I pray, Lord, is that we move forward tonight, that what we do, what we say, the decisions that we make will be pleasing to you. And I ask that you continue to bless this council, this city, and all who come to visit and work and live. And may they know that, um... You reside in our hearts. In Jesus' holy name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you for attending this evening. With that, we will proceed with the meeting. Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meetings. We've got two that we need to approve. First one would be the meeting on April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Any new or additional information in regards to that meeting? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. And then our meeting on April the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any newer additional information to be added to those notes? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel this evening, it is, um... Bittersweet. That's what we, that's what we say when people reach a, a point in their career that they are retiring from, from the city. We want to congratulate one of those folks this evening. And so I am going to ask Vicki Adams if she will join me here in front of the dais, please.
I came around the corner, somebody over there, and they were saying, like, hmm. As y'all can tell, it has been a delight to work with Vicki Adams. Vicki has, uh, has, uh, oil and trusted employee and worked down with the business license in the area down that is, uh, what I call forward-facing, some of the folks that, uh, that deal with, uh, the people that come in here to do business on a daily basis. And that is so important to us. And she has filled that role, well, through the years that she, that she has, um, earned, uh, her retirement and can now turn her attention full-time to supporting the Tigers in all of their athletic activities. She will do that with all the vigor in the world, as I, I well know, because we share a, a, a common trait in that regard, do we not? So we're always talking about our Tigers. But what we want to do tonight is to give her a certificate of appreciation that says congratulations upon your retirement from the City of Greer, presented in appreciation of twenty-one years dedicated service to the City of Greer. From May third, two thousand and four to May ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, Vicki Adams, please join me in a round of applause.
A real Tiger? I just wanted to say I felt I'm very privileged and I feel very honored to have had the opportunity to work with the city. And there's, it's kind of a bittersweet because it's kind of like, do I really want to do this? But, you know, it's time. And like I said, I got my Tigers and two nine-year-olds, winning grand boys to play with. So I think they'll keep me busy. But it truly has been a, a privilege and a pleasure to work with the City of Greer. And thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Should look further down the agenda. We've got several recognitions that we want to make tonight. Was? Was? I'm going to actually say it's Holtzklaw, who is with our athletics, uh, uh, athletics coordinator for our Rick Walker and so David. It is our opportunity this evening to recognize some state champions, wrestlers. And I understand there is something very unique about these two. We would like to recognize two wrestlers that are a part of our Tomahawk Youth Wrestling Program within the Parks Recreation and Tourism Department. These wrestlers recently won state championships in the South Carolina Youth Wrestling Association State Tournament that took place in March. This is the fifth consecutive season that Tomahawk Youth Wrestling has had multiple wrestling medals awarded in the state tournament. Head coach Brian Levinson is in attendance tonight and will help us honor these two wrestlers. So, Coach, if you want to come up as well, too? We want to recognize Koye Barnett, who won gold in the twelve and under heavyweight division. This is his sixth consecutive state championship, and he has never lost a match in a state championship tournament.
That's fantastic.
I, I, I think that the slang word for that is, "You're a dog, aren't you, boy?" That's what I hear on all these sports shows. Yeah. Now, here's what really makes this interesting. Next person that we're going to honor, one gold in both the girls and the boys, six under, six and under, seventy pounds, rookie division. She is Vivian Barnett, the first female to win a state championship for the program. Vivian, join us. Can you take him down? Brother and sisters, I guess, uh, yeah. Many thanks to Brian and all of our interior coaches that can continue to do a fantastic job with our youth wrestling program. The coaches put their heart and soul into this program, and it continues to be one that everyone in the City of Greer can be proud of. Tomahawk Youth Wrestling is also hosted at the Tomahawk International Invitational Tournament for the third straight year on February eighth, and it reached a capacity with two hundred youth wrestlers competing at Greer High School. Congratulations to these wrestlers on being state champions. And I believe we've got something that we, we've got certificates for them, or not, not this evening, okay? But we did, I did, I guess it was a slip of the tongue, almost internationally. We will, if y'all stick around for a couple of more years, we'll be able to host tournaments that will be able to host a lot more than two hundred people at the high school. And we'll recruit people from all of them, maybe internationally, but around the country in southeast. And we look forward to that and hope y'all are still wrestling. Congratulations. Saw Anne Cunningham here earlier. She's, is she still here? Anne's head of...
Really?
You're not a wrestler, but I just wanted to... I just wanted to thank you for, uh, for what your department does and for attracting tournaments like this and, uh, and helping us understand that we are a community of diversity in terms of the sports that we view and participate in. And thank you for the programming that helps us accomplish that. Sarah Odom, start making your way up here. I'll do with that for sure. And have you got those? Okay, all right. So we have, we have just concluded at the Cultural Arts Center our, um, annual art exhibit, jury art exhibit. And, um, we want to recognize those folks this evening. And so I know that there are, it's like a number of them here this evening. And so I'm going to ask them to come up. And if they will, we've got a certificate for you. And if you'll stay just a second, we'll, we'll get a, get a picture as well, too. And, um, let's just start off with adult photography. Third place in adult photography went to Marcy Musgrove. Marcy here. Second place went to Erica Klenkowski. And our first... And our first place winner was Matt Loftus.
I seen him win something, yeah.
Uh, then in traditional media, adult media, we've got honorable mentions for Jenny Kim. And Nikki. Like she's with us this evening. And Claudia Holmes. Both sides, how about that? Uh, in the traditional media, fifth place went to Janice McGillicuddy. Fourth place to George Milliken. Third place, Tom Forster. Five of the little folks, let's see, we can, we can find the plaid service, I'm trying to make it. Second place to Melissa Piney. And first place to Jamie Kane. And in the student division, traditional media, honorable mention goes to Mackenzie Jumper. And then will be with us this evening. Fourth place goes to Emma Guthrie. Third place to Elena Malbado. Malbado. Second place to Nia Omee. Albado, I promise. And our first place winner was Susanna Cofarubas Abiyah. These folks are the, um, are being recognized for the twenty-twenty-five juried art exhibit entitled Greer Faces in Places. This was an annual exhibit. It'll be on display at the Cultural Arts Center through mid-May at the Edward R. Greer City of Greer Center for the arts located in 804 Trade Street in Greer. This exhibition was juried and placed by six judges. Give these folks a big round of applause. Yeah, we might scratch up. Make two rows if we need to. Yeah.
You gonna stick around?
I am.
End with that. Here goes our crowd.
You know how to clear a room, don't you, Rick? Don't go.
Bye, Vicki.
Bye.
Come back.
See you at the breakfast. We'll do that? Yeah. I think I retired him. He'll still come to that breakfast.
We have a breakfast last year?
Yeah, the Christmas breakfast.
We did?
It was good.
She'll be missed with her personality.
Um, our next proclamation is in regards to National Historic Preservation Month. Are there individuals here in regards to that? If not, I'm going to go ahead and offer this proclamation, which reads as thus, "This is National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in nineteen seventy-three, and as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. This is Historic Preservation Month and can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Greer and surrounding communities. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all backgrounds. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas the City of Greer contains six individual properties on the National Register of Historic Places, as well as one historic district comprised of seventeen properties in downtown Greer area. And whereas the City of Greer continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops, the protection of these resources, both built and natural, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties as overseen by Board of Architectural Review. And therefore, I, Mayor Rick Danner, City of Greer, along with the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Reservation Month in Greer. All upon our residents to join us across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation." This is a proclamation for ALS Awareness Month. Is anybody here in regards to ALS this month? Whereas iomiotropic lateral sclerosis, also commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressively fatal neurogenical disease in which a person's brain loses connection with its muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. Whereas thousands of new ALS cases are reported every year. Estimates show that every ninety minutes, someone's diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. Whereas on average, patients diagnosed with ALS die only two to five years from time of diagnosis. And the exact cause of ALS is still unknown. And there is also no known cure for ALS at this time. People who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and that from this disease than those with no history of military service. Whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is a vital portion before the ALS. And whereas the ALS Association is the largest philanthropic donor of ALS research globally and has committed more than a hundred and fifty-five million dollars to support more than five hundred and fifty projects across the United States and in eighteen different countries. ALS Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledging the terrible impact this disease has on these individuals and their families, and to support research to eradicate this disease. City of Greer and Greer City Council hereby declare May twenty-twenty-five as ALS Awareness Month in the City of Greer. Uh, we will see that appropriate parties get that as well, too.
Counsel, if you'll give me just a moment here, I'm gonna have to boot up again. Administrator's report. Mr. Mayorman, please.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you very much. Um, first, I want to give a shout out to our fire department. They visited twenty-three homes and installed sixty-three smoke alarms during a recent blitz in connection with the American Red Cross. Um, we're going to do another one in the Victor Mill area in October. So to learn more about how the fire department can assist with smoke alarms in your home, please go to the, the, the fire department's webpage on the City of Greer website. Ann and her group, I know she just walked out, but Ann and her group, especially in the events division, as well as our, um, Public Services Department and Public Safety Team, helped put together an awesome international festival. So I want to thank them again for that. Twenty-one countries represented, twenty-six live performances, seven international sports were showcased, and one Parade of Nations, which is always everybody's favorite. Also want to thank, um, our staff in administration, specifically Michelle Willis and Debbie Miles, uh, and all their team for their work on Greer Night at the Drive, May first. It's our annual city picnic. But it's also an opportunity to showcase all of the great things that are going on in the City of Greer. So we had a great night on May first, celebrating the city. Trade Street will host the BMW Pro-Am Parte en Trade, P-A-R-T-E-E, if you're following the golf puns. Parte en Trade on Sunday, June first, from eleven to three, live music vendors, food, drinks, a car show, and a kid's zone. Also, a quick reminder, the Tunes in the Park will be May seventeenth, uh, from seven to ten. The Farmer's Market eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of May from eleven to two. And Greer Live will be May twenty-third from five to eight. Also, on the heels of a, what was a pretty successful, uh, meeting that we hosted in the Needmore Community, um, our code enforcement department will be holding another meeting in the Sunnyside Community on May twenty-second to talk a little bit more about, um, how code enforcement works, how communities can become involved and things that can be done to, um, assist the city and your neighbors in maintaining, uh, community pride and neighborhood pride. So look for that, May twenty-second in Sunnyside. And last but not least, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I do want to introduce you to a new face that you will be seeing, um, moving forward. Mr. Alex Cahill is now, you can just stand up, Alex, is our new planning and development director. Alex comes to us, comes to us from Davidson, North Carolina, um, and started last Monday. Is that right? Yeah. So Alex is now with us, and he's taken the helm of our planning and development department. So, um, he'll be around a little bit after the meeting and get a chance to meet you formally. But I did want to make sure to recognize him and, um, look forward to working with him. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's, uh, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. Most of these terms expire at the end of June, so some of this is preemptive. We will, uh, continue talking with, um, our department heads and others as they, uh, have interaction with members of the, uh, the boards. Also, there are some outside boards that we have representatives on and, um... We call in the meeting to order there? With, with that then, we will start through these. Not all of these will have a recommendation this evening, but, um, we're gonna whittle away on this over the next months to six weeks to, uh, to try and have all these terms filled by the end of their year of, uh, service. And so, um, from the Board of Architectural Review, David Langley's term will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Any information in that regard at this point?
He would like to continue to serve if it's at the pleasure of counsel.
With that then, I will entertain a motion, uh, to reappoint David Langley to the Board of Architectural Review.
I'll make that motion. David has served our...
I'll make that motion. David has served our city well, not only in this capacity, but a lot of other things he does, so.
I'll second.
Have a motion. The second floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission is one of those outside agencies that we deal with, and has, as the city have a representative on that board. I have spoken with Mr. Burley. He is a neighbor, and he is willing to serve again in that regard. I did make it clear that we would touch base with the Airport Environs Planning Commission before we moved forward with this, but he has indicated his willingness to continue to serve. So I will bring that one back before you at appropriate time. The next board that you see before you this evening is the Greer Trust Board of Trustees. You will see that all five of these members' terms expired on June 30th of 2024. We have proposed that those members that have served and have served well, they have been notified that their terms have expired, and thanked for that. And so with that, then, we will need five new members for the Greer Board Trustees, for the Greer Trust Board. That is something that will require action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Jamil Allen, Ms. Monica Munoz, Mr. William Crosby, Mrs. Ann Drayton Lister, and Mr. Wayne Griffin to the Greer Trust.
That comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, municipal judge appointment. This is one that is a tough one, because our municipal judge has served us well for many, many years. And both the administrator and I have had one-on-one discussions with Judge Memes, Hank to many of us. And Hank has indicated that he would like to retire, and we are going to accommodate him in that regard. We feel like this is a great opportunity for us to have time to say farewell to the judge who has served so many years with us, and to bring in his replacement and make that seamless in terms of that transaction. I would like to ask Counsel to appoint him to a one-year term that will expire June 30th, 2026. That does require action.
So moved. I like.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions in that regard?
Do you advertise for that position, or how do you fill that position?
In that particular case, we would solicit qualified judges, and Counsel would then make that appointment. But there will be a process that will work through over the next few months to develop that.
This is a Counsel appointment?
It's a full Counsel appointment, but we will develop a process with Counsel's direction on how you want to handle that.
I've never hired a judge.
Judge Memes predates a lot of people. And I can promise you, he's not gonna let us misstep in the appointment.
With his advising consent, probably.
Yes. Yes. I will say this. I indicated that Andy and I have both talked to the judge one-on-one. This is a difficult decision for him, but I think he also understands that if you ask him, his farm is calling him. And he, you know, it's a testament to his love for this city that he was willing to work with us and give us a year to move forward on this. And it's also a testament to him that he wanted to be part of the process that replaced him. And I thought that was pretty cool as well, too. He runs a tight ship over there, and he brings his, I think Jay has mentioned this on multiple occasions, his own form of justice to many of the folks that come in front of him. And more often than not, they get a life lesson rather than a sentence. And he has served us well, and we will miss him. So we do have another year with him. And with that, have we?
Have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. With that, then, anything else to follow up? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the last one before us this evening is the Planning Commission. You will see Districts Two, Three, and Six, and then one member at large. Is anyone prepared this evening to nominate or renominate?
Yes, Mayor Danner, I'd like to reappoint Judy Jones to the Planning Commission. Spoke with her. She says it's an honor for her to be on Planning Commission. Been doing it for twenty years now, and don't see a need of making any kind of changes there. She does a stellar job.
Comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Are questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Others?
Mr. Mayor, I've also spoken to Mr. Adam Toma. Lives in the Redcroft community within District Three. As you may remember, he's just recently moved over from another board to serve on the Planning Commission, very qualified, doing a great job. Loves our community. As I've mentioned with several of the folks that I've put before you to nominate to different boards, it's important to me to have someone living south of 85 where we're growing so rapidly. Mr. Toma does indeed live south of 85 in that area, understands what's good and what are the challenges in that area. And so I'm happy to put him back up for nomination before you to serve another term.
Comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for questions or discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Others? We have an at-large berth that will expire June 30th, 2025. Mr. Will Lavender's term will expire June 30th. Mr. Lavender indicated earlier that a year ago with that, I would ask that in my stead, someone make a motion that William Lavender be reappointed to the Planning Commission, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. We thank all those that are being reappointed and appreciate your time and your service. Counsel, let's move to items of new business this evening. First item of new business this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 12-2025. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Kaylee Henderson, located at 111 Maryland Avenue from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Mr. Bowles, one of our planners, joins us this evening for the first reading of ordinance number 1225.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor stated, this is ordinance 1225. The Planning Commission docket number was RZ 25-05. Kaylee Henderson is the applicant and the owner of the property. The address is 111 Maryland Avenue. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, or SN, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here you will see an aerial of the existing parcel. It is 3.801 acres. Here is the zoning map. In the orange, you will see suburban neighborhood. The blue parcel adjacent, oop, excuse me, adjacent to it is manufacturing and logistics, and that is the City of Greer Operations Center. Here is the future land use map. As you can see, pretty much the entire area is traditional neighborhood. And lastly, here is a photo of existing conditions. And just a little bit of an overview of the request. Once again, pretty much all of the surrounding uses are residential, zone suburban neighborhood, although there is a railroad right-of-way to the south, and to the west is the City of Greer Operations Center. This is consistent with the future land use map and with surrounding zoning, so staff recommends approval. And Planning Commission met about this last month, and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you for the information, sir. By show of hand, is the owner or representative, the owner of the property with us this evening? I understand the owner was detained this evening and not going to be able to join us as a representative here this evening. We'll proceed with first reading of the ordinance for the purpose of discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
When we do the, when we carve off this piece, you know, just for the house, and then how much acreage remains with the second parcel?
I'm not entirely sure. We haven't seen like a proposed lot split survey yet. But again, the existing parcel is pretty large. It's 3.8 acres or so. And if it were successfully rezoned to traditional neighborhood, the minimum lot size for that, for the new parcel that would be carved out, would be 5,000 square feet, but I think it's safe to say it'd be a lot larger than that if we go to the aerial here.
I think the way that suburban neighborhood is written, it gives you the ability to build, is it up to, is it two or three units on there that could potentially be duplexes without having to add stormwater, or really detention, really detention pond?
So our standards for stormwater detention, I believe, as a general rule of thumb, it's if you are, if the limits of disturbance are greater than one acre, or if you're talking about, I want to say, five or more lots or potentially dwelling units. Although we usually have to kind of talk to engineering to make that determination.
By going with this zoning, I mean you could effectively put more than one duplex on this piece of property. Is that correct?
Theoretically, yes, sir. You could probably get a few more extra parcels out of this. However, you know, it would need to meet things like our frontage requirements. And as you can see, a lot of the acreage is kind of back here, and in terms of where you could add new lots, it would pretty much have to front along these roads. So you'd be pretty much limited to these areas here. And down this way is also a creek and a small floodplain, I believe, in addition to, I believe, some unopened or unimproved right-of-way that's left over from Sumter Street. So I think they're pretty well hemmed in to this area in terms of future development. Could potentially happen, but I know the applicant at this point only intends to put, basically split the lot probably around here, and build a single, you know, side-by-side duplex on there.
Okay. Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Let's move to the second item of new business this evening. It's the first and final reading of Resolution Number 92025. This is a resolution to accept select streets in Blue Ridge Plantation, namely streets in the Seven Oaks, Hidden Springs, and the Meadows sections into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Grant joins us for that discussion. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. As the mayor stated, we're here to request certain streets in Blue Ridge Plantation be accepted into the city for ownership and maintenance. And I think you have a map here, and you should have a map in your packet there. Just note the blue area, the blue shaded area is Seven Oaks. The green shaded area is Hidden Springs, and the red shaded area is the Meadows. This development started in approximately 2002 timeframe, and has been up and down on progress over the years. But the current developer bought the project in or around 2020. These three sections brought to you, brought before you tonight are 100% built out. In 2022, they approached us about taking these streets into the city, which at that time, we inspected, provided a punch list of items that needed to be installed or repaired, which included a multi-use path, missing or damaged sidewalks and ADA ramps, street signage, and final paving in Seven Oaks. Hidden Springs and the Meadows were already paved, likely around the 2005 timeframe, and they were in need of crack sealing and surface coating with HA5, which we requested to be done before we accepted them. At their expense, the developer had them crack sealed, and the HA5 applied in 2023. And I told them at the time, we wanted to wait at least six months to see how all this performed over time. I have re-inspected all the streets periodically since 2023, and the crack seal HA5 is performing well. The streets in Hidden Springs and the Meadows are in as good a shape or better than any other 20-year-old streets we have in the city. The paving in Seven Oaks is under five years old and is in good condition. So therefore, given that the developer has complied with all the requirements on these streets and subsequent inspections finding no issues, staff believes they meet city standards and recommends that all streets listed on the ordinance in Seven Oaks section, 4,458 feet, the Hidden Springs section, 3,535 feet, and the Meadows section, 3,346 feet, be accepted into the city system for ownership and maintenance. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. With that, then, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Steve, does this include the sidewalks, the curb and guttering?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm thankful to see this. I know we, there was a stretch where we were really concerned that this was not gonna get finished. I'm so glad that this development finished out, and the developer was cooperative and worked with us to get this finished.
Agreed.
This has been going for, ongoing for a long, long time.
Yes, sir. Before my time.
I echo the remarks. This has been a long time coming. I think you, our former administration and our current administration for continuing to work with these folks, the developer and others that have spent a lot of time and money trying to figure this situation out, and kudos to all involved. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I agree 100%. It's been, it's been a challenge for a lot of people.
Has been a challenge. Has been a challenge. Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Katrina Woodruff, our Assistant City Administrator, is making her way to, uh, the dais, uh, for the first and final reading of Resolution Number 10-2025. This is a resolution approving the opioid settlement funding distribution in compliance with the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Act, South Carolina Code 115810. Uh, Ms. Woodruff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just for some background information, in February 2022, the National Prescription Opiate Litigation Plaintiff Executive Committee finalized settlements totaling $26 billion with three of the nation's top wholesale pharmaceutical drug distributors: AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, McKeeson, and opioid manufacturer Johnson &amp; Johnson. The South Carolina Opioid Recovery Act approved by Governor Henry McMaster in May of 2022 established the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund, AKA SCORF, and the administration accountability and operation of the fund in accordance with the terms of the South Carolina Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreement. From this, $360 million should come to the state of South Carolina over an 18-year period, which started in 2022. The City of Greer slated to receive $2.5 million over the 18-year timeframe. There are two, I'll say, pots of money to apply for SCORF funding. The guaranteed political subdivision will say GPS sub-fund and the discretionary sub-fund. Presently, the city has $798,000 allocated through the GPS sub-fund for its use. If, uh, GPS does not expend the money allocated within three years of receiving the allocation, the money rolls over to the discretionary sub-fund. The city has $291,000 that will roll over into this discretionary sub-fund if not expended by the end of 2025. The Forrester Center reached out to the mayor with proposals. Subsequently, city staff met to discuss the proposals, as well as to determine if the city had any immediate uses for the GPS funds, in which we do not. After researching and conducting an onsite visit of the Forrester Center, City of Greer Medication Assisted Treatment Center, located in the Indigo Hope Neighborhood Impact Center, staff is bringing one of the TFC proposal for you for consideration. In your agenda package, you have a resolution for approving opioid settlement funding distribution, along with a technical proposal submitted by the Forrester Center for your consideration. Ms. Audrey Collin, Director of Outreach and Recovery Services, is here this evening, should you have any questions about the proposal.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, for the purpose of discussion, let me get this, uh, moving along. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Um... We, we have gotten the, the technical overview. Would you like to come to the podium and give us some, some information about exactly what it is that we're doing? I've, I have had an opportunity to, to, to meet and, um, understand where we are in this, and, um, I think this is a, uh, something that the community can, can benefit from. Uh, it's, um, it, it, it gets a little, um, it, it gets a little mired down in official language sometimes, but I think if you've been working with it, as you have for the last several years, that, uh, you can, you can give us maybe the, the layman's term of why we would, uh, we would want to spend this money in the way that we have proposed to do it.
Absolutely. Um-
If you would state your name and association with, uh, um, the, the company that, uh, we're talking about this evening as well, too, please.
Audrey Collin, and I'm with the Forrester Center for Behavioral Health and Director of Outreach and Recovery Services. So, um, in 2020, we were approached by our state office, which is DAOTIS, and, um, the Overd- the Overdose Review Board, about the hotspot for overdoses in Greer. Being from Greer, I know exactly what the problem was, most likely transportation, being sort of betwixt and between Spartanburg and Greenville. Um, also know the community very well and some of the struggles that we are facing, even with unhoused, um, individuals as well. So we started with, uh, distributing Narcan and working with the, uh, Daily Bread Soup Kitchen, Angry Relief, and providing just outreach information about how to get treatment. Uh, pretty soon, we were providing services one afternoon a week at the soup kitchen after they finished, in the dining room. Um, that, uh, quickly led to growing to two afternoons, three afternoons, and we knew that we just couldn't sustain it, uh, there. So it just so happened that the Indigo Hope Center was opening, that they were moving Greer Relief in there, so it seemed like, uh, a no-brainer to partner with them. Uh, we're serving some of the same population. We run around 45 people, uh, on active caseload list, but we have served way more than that. We've been able to, uh, get people equipped for working. Um, once they stabilize on, uh, the medications for alcohol or opioid use disorder, or, uh, you know, therapies for other s- substances as well, then they can begin to piece the, the pieces of their life back together, family, uh, relationships, and, um, just feeling like they can be self-sufficient, um, which I know is good for the individual, for the people's lives that they touch, and of course, for our community. Um, so we think we can do a whole lot more, right? And, uh, this isn't an issue that's going anywhere anytime soon. Um, in fact, we've been able to lower, our state accredits us with lowering the overdoses so that Greer is no longer a hotspot on, on their radar. Uh, of course, there are other people doing things, but, um, you know, we came at that time, and since then, uh, you know, we significantly decreased it.
Thank you, ma'am. If you will have a seat or stand over there to the side if there's questions that, that may be helpful or come up, we'll do that. I do want to call Ms. Woodruff back up because I, she has done a yeoman's task of wading through a pile of paperwork that, uh, was several inches thick, and I know she spent a lot of time on this. The long and the short of, of this is that there was a settlement, uh, that, uh, the money is, has come to the state. Uh, the state distributes it, and if it's not used, it was proportioned to the cities. If it's not used, it was use it or lose it. Um, we were made aware of this situation, and you have vetted this all the way through, have you not?
Correct.
Yeah. So we are at the point now that, um, we have, how much money at this point? 200 and...
291,000 that we will lose, um, for our GPS funding at the end of this year, if not allocated.
Okay. Um, with that, then, for, um, further discussion, um, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
You have a motion.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, sir.
Yes.
Good. We're already there, then. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
What is the guidance or the guidelines as to how the money can, is to be spent?
There is very specific proposals that have to be completed. They're called technical proposals, and it has to be one of the approved, um, I'll say, I won't say theories or whatever, but practices by the SCORF board. And the SCORF board is made up of professionals, of doctors, counselors, and, um, all professionals that have qualifications to read through these proposals.
I will add, Mr. Airwood, that both the police chief and the fire chief were part of this process. Um, I know there was some discussion about, uh, the Narcan and some other things they have, to my, uh, knowledge, signed off on what we're, what we're doing here.
That is correct.
You mentioned the, uh, some of your folks that, that you're treating or helping, um, were homeless. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and then, of course, you, you were, you started at the soup kitchen. So how many folks do you think, uh, are homeless that, that you're dealing with?
Large quantity, per percentage, at the soup kitchen, but now that we've moved into the... We've been able to get people to other places where they can eat. They may not be coming back to Greer right away, especially. I would say 30% now, perhaps, for homelessness. Other, other organizations as well.
Are you, uh, when you say 30%, how, um, the reason I'm asking this, there's something else going on behind the scenes that, that we're talking about the, the homeless that we have and how we, and, and we're, we're just now trying to get started with it, and we're, we're, I guess, for lack of a better term, needing to do a census of the homeless. And then there's a lot of other questions and talking that goes along with them, but so is that, is that number, the 30%, you still think that's, that's accurate for the, for the population you're dealing with?
Well, who, who come to us for services now? Greer community, I believe, maybe. I don't exactly know what hap- I do know that, um, you're wasted your, like, point and time to find out.
Yeah, yeah, but I, okay, but, but you guys have those, those statistics, right? Okay.
Others?
I just want to thank the Forrester, uh, Center for all the work they've done. I mean, I've been tracking you all for a few years now. Got super excited when you started working out of the soup kitchen, the one day a week. So glad that it's blossomed into more than that, and I'm so glad that the folks in our community are seeing the need to make a difference in, in the way they are living and taking you up on that counseling and, and what, all the services you all provide. So, uh, kudos to the work you're doing. A lot of folks don't really see it. It's not glamorous work. It's not easy work, but, um, really appreciate it, and it's making a difference, at least in, in my community, for sure.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, it appears we have no more business this evening. I'll call the meeting closed.